The time is now 6:00 PM. Our regular city council meeting for October 17th is now in session. First on the agenda is Councilmember Davis will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of our community. As we are assembled here tonight, I graciously ask that you grant our city officials the ability to work together and insight to meeting the needs of our residents. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Help us to act with character and conviction. Provide us with the confidence to do what is good. We thank you for giving us a spirit of service and reminding us that we are stewards of your authority. Finally, we ask that you watch over our city employees and keep them safe as they work diligently to serve our residents. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Next, we have a couple of proclamations. If I can have the representatives for the Hill Country Night Month, if we can please come to the podium.
Hill Country Night Sky Month, October 2023. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of a star-filled skies are heritage of all humankind and locally to the inhabitants of Shirts and are therefore worthy of celebration. Whereas the experience of standing beneath a star-filled night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and may encourage interest in science and nature, especially among young people. Whereas the opportunity to view star-filled skies attracts tourists to our region and therefore economic benefit to the city of Shirts. Whereas preserving the rich historic heritage and starry night skies of Shirts is important to its residents. Whereas light pollution, which is wasted light that performs no function or task, and artificial light that goes wherever it's not supposed to go, is created by glare, light trespass, sky glow, and overlighting. And whereas light pollution wastes natural resources amounting to at least 2 billion per year and contributes to diminished American energy independence. Whereas the historical view of the night skies has been eroding in many nearby areas and generations are growing up with limited, if any, view of the wonders of the universe. And whereas the influx of people into the Texas Hill Country region and the accompanying light pollution from the area lighting fixtures has been steadily on the rise. Whereas solving the problem of light pollution involves making better use of outdoor lighting to direct light down to where it is needed. Instead of upward into the sky, putting outdoor lights on timers and using outdoor lighting only where necessary. Whereas Hill Country communities are increasingly dedicated to preserving of its region's night skies, as evidenced by frequent educational activities conducted in our region and by increasing number of places in our region. Order number 367, order amending number 199, for regulation of outdoor lighting in the unincorporated areas of Comal County, Texas, within three miles of the Camp Bullis Boundary, Guadalupe River State Park, Star Parties in partnership with San Antonio Astrological Association, New Braunfels Astronomy Club, Star Parties, Comal County Friends of Night Skies, Bracken Cave Preserve, and the Comal County Dark Skies, Resolution Number 2108-26. And whereas the regional effort and preservation and celebration, our night skies is worthy a month-long celebration. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City of Shirts Council, October 2023, shall hereafter be known as Hill Country Night Skies Month in Shirts, Texas, that the city council encourages citizens to enjoy the night skies and to participate in Shirts, Comal County, and Hill Country regional events and programs celebrating the night skies and promoting the ways in which communities are working to preserve it. That the city council encourages citizens to learn about light pollution and why it matters, night skies friendly lighting and lighting regulations, and to implement practices and lighting improvements that will reduce light pollution, therefore preserving our night skies. And witness there to four I hear under the hand of the seal of the City of Shirts affixed on the 17th day of October 2023.
Thank you to the City of Shirts for having this proclamation, and it's very protective of our night skies, plus for the Bracken Bat Cave, which is very close to you all, Camp Bullis, and also any of your parks, Guadalupe River State Park and Honey Street Cave Park, and then the military bases that are near here in San Antonio. Comal County Friends of the Night Sky, we have a website if you'd like to find out how to make your home and your business more night sky-friendly. We have a website at comaldarksky.com, and that's it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's take a photo.
Our next proclamation is the Memorial Service Detachment. If I can have the representatives, please come and join me up here. As we all know, Veterans Day is coming up on November 11th, and I think our next meeting is scheduled for November 14th. And I felt it was, this is a perfect opportunity to recognize the Memorial Service Detachment. The City of Shirts proclamation, Memorial Service Detachment proclamation. Whereas in 1979, the Department of Defense issued a directive that established military burial honors for active duty, Medal of Honor recipients, military retirees, and other veterans who fulfill their military obligation. Whereas in Fort Sam Houston National Cemetery, the 5th Army provided full honors for these veterans until the fall of 1988. Because of the military cutbacks, resources were unavailable to provide full military burial honors. Whereas the all-volunteer Fort Sam Houston Memorial Service Detachment assumed to perform the military burial honors for veterans at no expense to the families and assuring that our nation's veterans receive a fitting tribute they so richly deserve. Whereas the Memorial Service Detachment Honor Guard is recognized by the Department of Veterans Affairs, it does not receive any direct funding. The VA does provide ammunition, lunches, and some supplies. Whereas the Memorial Service Detachment is a nonprofit 501(c)(19) organization, and it is sustained through donations and fundraisers. These funds are used to purchase uniforms, fire parts, rifle parts, flags, flag posts, office supplies for other operational expenses. Whereas the Memorial Service Detachment began with one squad on Tuesday, December 17th, 1991, honoring three veterans. It would take another 14 months before the four remaining squads would perform and put on this line. Whereas the Memorial Service Detachment is much like a military organization with a commander, a vice commander, a staff, five squad leaders with their assistants. The Memorial Service Detachment now consists of 107 military veterans and retirees. Whereas the Memorial Service Detachment members have fought in Korean Wars, Vietnam War, the Gulf War, Operation Iraqi Freedom. It has been said that the Memorial Service Detachment is a band of brothers, and now this band of brothers get together to honor those who have fallen. Whereas between 1901 and 2001, 100 years, only 11,417 memorial services were provided. And in the last 20 years, between 2002 and 2020, over 44,000 memorial services were provided by the Memorial Service Detachment. The Memorial Service Detachment provides a traditional, a three volley of rifles of fire and the sound of taps for all veterans. Whereas the Memorial Service Detachment provides honor and respect for those who have served this country by securing the final resting place of these forgotten heroes. We have laid to rest our beloved members of the greatest generation and continue now into the newer generation with the same respect and admiration. Now therefore, I Ralph Gutierrez, Mayor for the City of Shirts, do hereby proclaim upon the citizens of the City of Shirts to recognize the Memorial Service Detachment, who provide the honors and respect for those who have served this country. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, we just want to thank the City of Shirts for this recognition. Yesterday, after today, we have done 44,617 honors to our veterans. So we appreciate the recognition, Mayor. Also, on behalf of the Memorial Service Detachment and the Commander Manny Mendoza, we would like to present this flag to the City of Shirts for what you have done for our veterans and continue to do. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, I also have, on behalf of the City of Shirts, I'd like to provide you these memorial honors.
And we're always looking for volunteers, Mayor, so one day you might come back and join us.
First is the milestone service pin. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of my favorite things I get to do in the City of Shirts is recognize and acknowledge the tenure of our employees. And when we bring it to council, it's somebody who's been here 20 years or longer. It doesn't necessarily mean they're old, they're just experienced. So if I could have Michael McGuire come on up. So of course, we like to have a little bit of fun with some of our more tenured employees. Back in 2003, when Michael started, the number one song was "Hot in Here" by Nelly. Remember that one? Cost of a Gallon was $1.34. Missed those days, exactly. Best Selling Vehicle in America was a Toyota Camry. And in the box office, the number one movie was Austin Powers in Goldmember. But, more importantly, the City of Shirts hired Michael McGuire. There you go. We got some pictures from back in the day. And my, VC, no.
Yeah, BG.
BG.
Before great.
So, Michael McGuire came to the City of Shirts in July of 2003. He began, he's worked in a number of capacities for the city over the years as a patrolman, detective, detective corporal, patrol corporal, and was most recently promoted in January of this year to his current rank of sergeant. Since then, he has been the patrol sergeant for the day shift and the night shift. He's been the SRO sergeant, the School Resource Officer Sergeant, and the sergeant over animal services. Some highlights throughout his career, and there are a lot of them, but he served several years on the Shirts PD SWAT team, as well as prosecuted, has been successful in the prosecution of several major cases over the years. Sergeant McGuire was born in San Antonio in September of 1969, moved around as a child. He was part of a military family, but came back to settle in the San Antonio area by middle school and graduated in the class of 1988 from Judson High School, my graduation year as well. Attended Southwest Texas State University, and he also enlisted in the Marine Corps as a reservist and had not one, but three deployments during the first Gulf War, and he served a combined total of eight years in the Marine Corps and also achieved the rank of sergeant as well. Sergeant McGuire has, he lives in the City of Shirts and has a lot of family, extended family in the area. His father, Mike McGuire, and his wife, Rosa, as well as his mother, Madeline Johnson, and her husband, Richard, and his brother, Bill McGuire, and his wife, Jennifer, and their children, Addison and Ashlyn. But most importantly, he's very proud of his daughter, Marlene McGuire, and loves her very much. And as I learned today, or yesterday, when we went to lunch, Michael's a very talented guy. He enjoys reading, listening to music, playing drums, hunting, fishing, camping, traveling, racing, kayaks, and canoes. He's competed in the Texas Water Safari multiple times, which is the world's toughest canoe race, which is a 260-mile trek that starts in San Marcos and goes down the San Marcos River to the Guadalupe, all the way to the San Antonio Bay. And also, you have to watch out for the alligators along the way because they will try and eat you. So, congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
For your 20 years. So, congratulations on 20 years, and we look forward to many, many more years together in the City of Shirts.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have the recognition from the Shirts Economic Development Corporation Board Member, Mr. Wayman.
I thought Brian's doing the talking on this. My name is Scott Wayman. I'm the Executive Director of the EDC, and it's not often that you get a chance to thank and recognize someone who was on the board of the corporation when it started. We're here today to recognize Roy Richards, and if you come on up, Roy. I was looking when Steve said that it was a song in 2000, whenever, when Roy started here, it was a Beyonce song in 2007. But Roy's been here, you know, I've looked into Roy's, he was the chairman currently of the EDC. Looking through his bio, he says that he taught his kids that you get out of stuff what you put into it. And Roy's done a tremendous job putting in to this community, this city, and the EDC especially. So Brian, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I don't know that anything I can say can really do justice, other than a couple of things. It certainly, as Scott alluded to, it's not just with the EDC, certainly a pillar in our community, but the business community, serving kind of local government in general as well. And again, you might think, well, where does that come from? There certainly is a legacy of that in his family that continues on to this day. So again, whatever we say can't do justice, but we are a far better place today due to all of your effort and all of your time and all of your commitment. Greatly appreciated. So.
Roy has shaped our city in so many ways. The impact that he had on our city and the business portion of this city is just, it's so hard to even pinpoint how much value you brought to our city. And we appreciate every, it's hard to say goodbye to someone that has really had this impact, and I just want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you for what you have done for this city. And you will always see your fruits of your labor are out there, always, you know, the impact. Thank you again, Roy, and I just want to.
So the question is, what do you get someone who's been around as long as he has? Holly, I didn't want to make it sound bad. Holly found a young lady that did an artist rendition.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Oh, my God. 71.
Can I just say a few words, Roy?
Well, I kind of feel like I'm attending my own funeral. But I'm still alive, I'm still going to be around, I'm still going to be part of this community and continue to serve in any capacity that I feel like I'm needed. I appreciate the kind words and the wonderful thoughts of everyone, and wish everybody the very best and continued prosperity and forward-looking for the city. So, thank you.
Get in here, Brian.
Hi, I'm Morgan. Let your family get in there. I definitely got close to this man around.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. That was very heavy. All right, let me get this pulled up. Sarah Gonzalez, Assistant City Manager, and I am very excited to be here tonight, to be able to talk about this award, and then also just kind of highlight some of it and what was shown at the conference. So, first of all, the Texas Municipal League is a voluntary association of close to 1,200 cities across Texas. TML's Municipal Excellence Awards recognize and encourage the achievement of Texas cities in meeting the challenge of municipal governance. This awards program seeks out the best of these programs to honor. Awards are given in two population categories, under 25,000 and cities over 25,000, and in five areas, which are management, innovations, communication programs, city spirit, public safety, and public works. So during the 2023 Texas Municipal League Annual Conference and Exhibition in Dallas, the City of Shirts received an excellence award in public safeties for cities over 25,000 in population. So I want to take a minute and play the video that was shown there. So for those of y'all that were there, you've seen this already, but I'd like to highlight it, and then bring up Amy and Mike and EMS, who actually were the ones that developed this program.
The finalists in public safety are the City of Shirts for its EMS Yellow Dot Program and the City of Weslaco for its Youth Fire Safety Poster Awards. The winner is the City of Shirts. The Shirts EMS launched the Yellow Dot Program to help those who may not be able to communicate their needs when involved in a traffic incident. By placing a yellow dot decal in the vehicle's rear window, first responders are alerted to check the glove compartment for information to ensure proper medical attention is given. The finalists in public works are the City of.
All right, so again, congratulations to our EMS department and Amy and Mike, if y'all would like to come up.
First of all, I want to say thank you tremendously to Sarah because without her we would not even have this award. You put in the time, the effort, submitted the application, and because of you, we are on the map with this beautiful award. So thank you. I want to thank my departments, the city, for all of this wonderful support. Without the support, it wouldn't go anywhere. So I'm excited to see where this goes. I'm hoping to see a lot of growth and development and to help as many people as we can along the way. So, thank you so much.
It's a great, great program. Thank you all for being part of it, and it's the first one in Texas. That's innovation. Thank you all so much. Next, we have another presentation, Scenic City Award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This wasn't the only award that we received at TML. The City of Shirts, under the direction of Ashley Ritchie, and if she can go ahead and please come on up here and grab your, she, please understand that I did not direct Ashley Ritchie to do this. It's more like get out of her way. When I got here, Ashley was talking about this project, and little did I know, she had already applied for it. She already found a funding source, and she'd already really submitted the application to it. She had done it in her hometown of Laverne, was very familiar with the program. She went into the program, discussed it with them, and came out with the platinum award, the highest that we could get. Ashley is going to show us, she has a real brief PowerPoint that she'd like to go over just so you're aware of what the program consists of, and I promise she won't take too awful long. So Ashley, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mr. Williams. Oh. I already messed up. So, Ashley Ritchie, Business Engagement Manager. So as you know, because, most of you are in that picture, that the EDC was, or the city really, was awarded the 2023 Scenic City Award at the TML Annual Conference in Dallas a couple weeks ago. So just a little background, just so you're aware, this is an award to municipalities by Scenic Texas, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization whose mission is preserve and enhance the state of Texas's visual environment. It was inspired by the visionary leadership of Texas's former First Lady, Lady Bird Johnson. She began the scenic movement during her husband's presidency and was instrumental in the Highway Beautifications Act creation and passage. The First Lady's vision was to make America the beautiful a reality. She said in 1968 that beautification is far more than a matter of cosmetics. For me, it describes the whole effort to bring a natural world and the man-made world into harmony. So, the EDC took on this project, and I will just go, going back, it began in 2010 with 13 certified cities, now it's up to 100. Up to 100. And basically, the applicants reply, and they are judged on their existing ordinances and code language, and who implement a variety of scenically and environmentally themed ordinances, plans, and programs. And those are the things they kind of look at, the parks and trails, streetscapes, lighting standards, utility sign control. And this is pretty much why we, being a scenic city, we. And this is pretty much why being a scenic city, it provides expert third-party evaluation of existing standards, forms a basis for continuing review and analysis of development plans, serves as a platform to educate citizens, and supports economic development and quality of life efforts, which the EDC and the city are both really focusing on right now. And out of 333 points, we scored 319. To fun fact, Shirts is now one of 25 Platinum status cities and the only Platinum-level city in the San Antonio MSA. And just because I'm a nerd, I threw this up there just so you can kind of get a visual of cities around Texas and what category they're in, and also, I'm just going to leave that one there. So, that's it.
One thing she failed to mention is that there's five categories when she placed them up there. It's recognized. We didn't hit recognized. We didn't even get the bronze. We didn't get the silver. We didn't get the gold. We went straight to the top. Thank you so much for doing this for our city. Appreciate it. Mr. James?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a fair number tonight. Just a reminder for folks, Thursday, October 19th, two days from now, we have the Domestic Violence Candlelight Vigil. That's from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM over in the Shirts Civic Center in the Blue Bonnet Hall. Friday, October 20th, we have movies and music in the park and costume contests. We're doing Hocus Pocus. That's at Rhine Valley Park, 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM. Sunday, October 22nd, we have the Owl Prowl, 8:30 PM to 9:30 PM at Crescent Park, Crescent Bend Nature Park. Friday, November 10th, the Shirts Sibyllo Selma Veterans Day Ceremony is at 9:00 AM. That's in Selma this year, at Selma Heroes Memorial, 9375 Corporate Drive in Selma. Also, just for folks, so you know, the city office will be closed Friday, November 10th in observance of Veterans Day, with Veterans Day actually being on the 11th Saturday. That Saturday, November 11th, we again have Nature Discovery Series, Horns and Thorns, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM Crescent Bend Nature Park. And then our next regular council meeting is Tuesday, November 14th, hearing council chambers. And just as a reminder, the City of Shirts will be holding its general election on November 7th, 2023, for the purposes of electing council members in places three, four, and five for three-year terms. That's November 2023 to November of 2026. Early voting begins October 23rd through November 3rd. Please check the county elections page for a list of early voting sites, hours of operation, and Election Day voting sites and hours of operation.
Thank you, Mr. James. Announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Mr. Williams?
No announcements this week, Mayor.
Okay. Announcements and recognitions by the mayor, I have none, so we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the Hearing of Residents. This time is to the side for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask before addressing the council, for the record, please state your name and address. We also have a couple of public hearings, so again, it's entirely up to you. If you'd like to speak during the hearing of residents, you may do so, or you may choose to wait until the public hearing, or you can speak at both. The choice is yours. Mayor Proton, please call our first speaker.
Maureen Moss. My name is Maureen Moss. I live at 3434 Wimbledon Drive. I have some concerns over the proposed changes to Ordinance 21m28, which was added to the agenda by council members Whitaker and Hayward. It states that council decided that written communications received from residents as part of the hearing of residents will only be provided to council and not read at the council meeting. Also, written communications will not be part of the record. That differs quite a bit from the current invitation to residents who may not have the time or the ability to be present at council meetings, but who may still participate by emailing the city secretary's office within the allotted time and have their email read and recorded by the secretary. The hearing of residents comments are not for council only, they are also for the citizens of our city. The comments offer various facts, opinions, and ideas, perhaps not thought of by council or other residents, but are still relevant and important in making decisions that affect citizens. Not everyone has the opportunity to attend meetings, the elderly, the disabled or ill, caregivers, parents with small children, and school activities, school board meetings, those who are without transportation, and the list can go on. They still have the right to be heard by the council and the citizens of our community. The new proposal will close the door for many residents, and it also makes me wonder, will the council members have time to read what the residents have written? Will they take into consideration what they wrote? Will they have time to open emails, letters? Will they have time to share them with other council members? At least when you're all here, we know that you're all hearing everything and listening to what the residents are saying. This proposal is, it might, I don't know for sure, it might be a reaction to a meeting, a recent meeting where there was an overwhelming response concerning a new development, but that normally doesn't happen, and I really don't believe these restrictions are necessary going forward. Thank you for your time. For Richard Moss?
Oh, I'm seating if I have any time left.
Richard Moss, 3434 Wimbledon Drive, Shirts, Texas, for the past 32 years. I would like to thank Councilman Spagliola as being one of the longest-serving councilmen and an outstanding representative of the community, and wish him well on his retirement. I don't know how many more meetings you have. Mayor Gutierrez, I just wanted to remind you, the first time I met you, it was at a special meeting that you called to inform the community about the Villas of Blue Bonnet Ridge. I thanked you for being proactive and informing the community about what was to come, so I can be nice. I would first like to talk about the restricting residents of being heard, Ordinance 23m28. We have many residents that are elderly and are afraid of public speaking and want to participate. I do not see how restricting access to being heard is doing the right thing. I understand as the city grows, there are more people to be heard, but restricting the weak is not the answer. I would ask you to vote no on restricting residents' opportunities. PDD, I've given you a sheet that's pretty much self-explanatory, I believe, that I think will help in the future on PDDs to make the process more transparent and easier to understand for everyone. I do understand some developers don't like the rules, but the sooner in the process that everyone is on the same page, the better will be for all. Why PDDs create a problem when not handled correctly? That's the second page I gave you, and that's from the Shirts Planning and Zoning Meeting, August 24th, and it's a transcript by Watson, starting at 2 hours, 48 minutes, and 45 seconds. And it talks about traffic in the area. And the other highlighted part of it is where the city representative says, "I think it did not rise to the level with the staff on this project to cause the denial recommendation in terms of the differences between single-family." Well, that statement is false, and I've explained that at many points, many different ways, and I don't understand how anybody couldn't understand this, or they could have voted for it in the beginning. There's only 55 lots out there. You can put four houses on it, and it'll have four times as much traffic as a residential. There is no way around that. You can put three units on it, it's three times as much. That was their second proposal. You can put two times as many units on it, it's twice as many. It is not, that statement is not correct. And I don't know why anybody there voted for this, or if you understood that you're going to have four times as much traffic. This statement is not correct, and I can see why PDDs are a problem. I've been involved in this one from the get-go, and there's nothing good I can say about this. And basically, I've watched the video on the PDD process, and somebody needs to be able to say no.
That's all for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. All right. We'll move on to consent agenda items. These are considered self-explanatory, and information packets are provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by council. Item number one, minutes. Item number two, Resolution Number 23R104. Item number three, Resolution Number 23R109. Item number four, Ordinance Number 23S25. Item number five, Ordinance Number 23S27. And item number six, Resolution Number 23R103. Council, do any of these need to be removed for separate action? Now, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items one through six?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Brown and second by Councilmember Hayward. Any comments? You can go ahead and cast your vote. If you can publish the vote. We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. All right. We'll move on to discussion items. I think we have everybody for item number eight, if I'm not mistaken. I'd like to move that one up, not waste these gentlemen's time. Are they all present, Ms. Gonzalez? They are? Okay. We'll move on to item number eight. We'll come back to number seven. Resolution with 23R102, approving a bond resolution previously adopted by the Board of Directors of the Shirts-Sagin Local Government Corporation, authorizing the issuance of obligation designated as the Shirts-Sagin Local Government Corporation Contract Revenue Improvement Bond New Series 2023, acknowledging that these bonds will be sold pursuant to the provisions of a purchase contract, ratifying, reconfirming, and re-adopting the provisions of a regional water supply contract executed between the City of Shirts, Texas, the City of Sagin, Texas, and the Shirts-Sagin Local Government Corporation, authorizing the mayor, the city manager, and the city secretary of the City of Shirts, Texas, to execute on behalf of the City of Shirts, Texas, all documents in connection with this transaction and all matters in connection therewith. Ms. Gonzalez, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah Gonzalez, Assistant City Manager. I'd like to introduce Andrew Friedman with Samco Capital Markets. He was here last week and spoke to y'all about this item, and so he will be presenting a little bit more and asking for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Andrew Friedman with Samco Capital Markets, financial advisor to the city. The resolution before you all this evening, as discussed last week, at least briefly, is for the City of Shirts to provide approval for the SSLGC to borrow up to $5 million. The Board of SSLGC has already approved a parameter sale. We went through the ratings process, should have that back from Standard and Poor's in the next day or two, and conducted the due diligence call with Estradahina Hosa, the sole manager of the bond financing, earlier today. All is proceeding well. As a reminder, SSLGC's debt is paid 50/50 between the City of Shirts and the City of Sagin. The impact of this debt service has already been accounted for within your WILDan utility rate study, and so there won't be a need for additional increases beyond what you all have examined within that rate study. The plan now is to proceed into bond pricing next Tuesday, the 24th, and then close sometime in the 30 days thereafter, projected for November 16th at this time. So with your approval of the resolution, it'll allow SSLGC to enter into a bond purchase agreement next week upon the successful pricing of the bonds. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have and seek your approval to proceed.
Thank you. All right. Council, floor is open for discussion. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 23R102?
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Dalla and second by Councilmember Hayward?
Yes.
Okay. Council, any other comments? If you can go ahead and cast your vote. If you can publish the vote, please. We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
All right. We'll go back to item number seven, Ordinance Number 23m28, amending the code of conduct and procedures on video conferencing and the hearing of residents' written statements. This is our first reading. Ms. Courtney, floor is yours.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mr. Williams, Cherie Kearney, Deputy City Secretary. I am bringing forth Ordinance 23m28 to amend or clarify the rules and procedures for council based on the workshop that was held on 9/19. The changes that we are requesting be made are about video conferencing. My understanding is that council found it difficult and challenging to hear when they were trying to participate in video conferencing from afar, and there are connectivity issues. Establishing a quorum shouldn't be an issue because they increase the number of council members, so that wouldn't require anyone to remote in in order to make a quorum. The service, from what I understand, was intermittent, communication was delayed, and a lot of times, people just couldn't hear. So we are asking that video conferencing not be allowed, and we've made that amendment to this section. The second part of our request or the ordinance is to amend the hearing of residents' written communications. It is not in our policy that the city secretary's office be required to read a statement that is submitted to you. We are only required to provide you a copy of those statements. It is not required by statute either, and so we would like to have that actually put in here and clarify that we do not have to read them during the city council meetings.
Thank you. All right. It's two different topics, so we're going to address one at a time. First, we'll go ahead and address the video conferencing that was requested by Councilmember Hayward. Do we have any comments regarding the video conferencing? Okay. All right. Next is the Hearing of Residents, the written statements. Do we have any comments on that one? Councilmember Whitaker?
Just to clarify, since we did have some residents that addressed that during the hearing of residents, just to assure people that as council members, it's part of our responsibility to read communications from the city staff, to prepare for meetings, to read the sometimes 958 pages that come with our packet of agenda items, and reading emails and keeping up with what residents are communicating with is part of our responsibility. So I feel like it's fair to say, if the city secretary provides those emails in advance of a meeting and a decision, we will read them. The residents are welcome to submit emails directly to the residents at any time. We do read those as well. I think the reason that this came about was because, well, first of all, I don't think it was practice before COVID. So we instituted the practice because of COVID, and a global pandemic caused us to change some procedures. And so really, what we're going back to is what is a normal, expected opportunity. We want to have the opportunity for the residents to be heard. There is an opportunity to come here. Not everybody will be able to, but that we have an excellent opportunity to send communication via email. So if you can't get here in person, you can send it via email. The council members will read it and take it into consideration. The concern that the fellow residents wouldn't hear those concerns with social media today, I think it's fair to say it's doable to get your concerns out there in the public realm. But as far as our responsibilities to make decisions, we will get the information, and I think that's really what's key. And the point of this forum here is for the council members to receive information and to make decisions. members to receive information and to make decisions. It's not necessarily the forum for a resident to air a grievance. And then finally, it puts the city secretary's office, I think, in a bind where they receive communications from anyone and everyone, and they, with a blanket policy of just reading it, they are put in a position where they may be reading something that violates our policy of what should be read, where not to, comments are not to be directed to individual council members or to the mayor. And so they would have to scrub each email. So it just, I think what we're doing is we're going back to a practice that was commonplace and accepted prior to COVID. I think it's reasonable. And again, just to assure the residents, any communication that comes to us via email, whether it's through the city secretary or directly to us, will be read prior to a meeting, just as we do preparation for any meeting. I think it's fair to say we will prepare, reading that and taking it into consideration for any votes that are coming our way. That's all I have.
Councilmembers.
Yeah. I've always had a firm belief that the residents have a right to be heard, even if they want to air a grievance. I understand the, we don't want to violate our rules of decorum though. But there are often reasons why somebody may want to send an email to the city council. Some people have a fear of talking in public. You could probably tell I'm not one of them. Sometimes people just can't make it to a council meeting. I've even heard people have a perception of retaliation if they dare speak before the city council. Probably, well, I know it's unfounded. I don't see that it's ever happened. Here's the thing, you know, we will have a copy of the email if they send it to us. But I think the comment was made, it isn't only directed towards us, it could be directed towards anybody who wants to hear. I don't know if it even needs to be put into writing, but as council members, we can always call up a point of privilege. If I deem that something needs to be said as a matter of fact, and a email message addressed to me would be a statement as a matter of fact, I could actually evoke my point of privilege and read it if I so choose. And I think any council member, I believe, has that right as a member of this council. We don't always live by Robert's Rules of Order, but this is one of those procedural things that is allowed. Now, if you want to modify that in some way, you know, a two-thirds vote, like I said, I have absolutely no desire to ever violate our rules of decorum. But if as a council member, we feel that, you know what, this is relevant to the discussion here, I think it should be read out loud. We should have that privilege. About, officer?
Okay. Councilmember Dalla.
Yeah, I wasn't going to go in depth, as Councilwoman Whitaker was going to with her comments, but basically, this is a practice that we instituted during COVID. We didn't do it beforehand, and I still see no need to make it a continuing practice, you know, like was stated. We get the emails. They can email to the city secretary and she can forward them, or all of our email contact information is on the website. They can email us directly. So I'm fine with this.
Council, any other comments? Councilmember Brown?
And just to clarify, these are kept as a matter of record as well, correct? Any emails that we get, any written correspondence?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's going to be there afterwards as well. So it's not like we're hiding anything.
No, they just want to be documented in the minutes.
Yep. So I'm good.
Council, any other comments? You know, Councilmember Skagliola did make a very good point, that, you know, any one of our council members could request a point of privilege when they see an email that absolutely needs to be read during the hearing of residents. So the option is there for any of these council to have that email read. I think most of the time is that we had some contentious items that came up. Seventeen emails said the same thing. And I think my actions were questioned during that time when, why were we going to read the same email 17 times? And then the other one that came into mind was from a resident that didn't reside in our city. It was from California. Not only that, I got emails from Australia. You know, it's just, I think it's a good point that, you know, we are seeing the emails that are being forwarded. Each council member will get a copy of it. And then if the council member feels that it is needed to be read, he or she will make that point of privilege. With that, any other comments? Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 23M28?
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion made by Councilmember Dalla and second by Councilmember Watson? Okay. Council, any other comments? If you go ahead and cast your vote. We can publish the vote. We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. All right. Next, we have a couple of public hearings. Our first one is item number nine, ordinance number 23S24, conduct a public hearing and consideration request to rezone approximately 2.1 acres of land from Neighborhood Services District and Plan Development District to a Plan Development District known as Wauwut County Parcel ID 31970, 31971, 39172, 39173, 39180, 31981, 39182, 39183, located northwest of the intersection between the Shertz Parkway and Wiederstein Road, City of Shertz, Wauwut County, Texas. First reading. Mr. Haas, floor is yours.
Evening, Council, Mayor, Ms. Williams. Ordinance 23S24, request to rezone approximately 2.1 acres from Neighborhood Services District and Plan Development District to Plan Development District. Samuel Haas, Senior Planner. The subject property is outlined here in green. It is currently part of the Live Oak Hills subdivision. To get your bearings, the, this is Shertz Parkway directly to the east, and then this is Wiederstein to the south. This is our public hearing notice map. The property is outlined in blue. The red line you see there is the 200-foot notification buffer as required by the state. On September 15th, five public hearing notices were mailed. As of this report, there are two responses in favor. There was one sign posted on the property, and a notice for this public hearing was in the San Antonio Express on September 29th. This is a zoning exhibit that was submitted as part of the application. The arrow is pointing to Block 41, Lot 13 of the Live Oak Hills subdivision, which I will touch on here in a minute. It is kind of the onus for this zone change. So the proposal is for the Heritage Oaks 2 PDD. It's approximately 2.1 acres. It will be in conformance with the original Heritage Oaks PDD, which was approved on May 11th, 2021, as part of ordinance 21S15. So a little background on the property. This is the Live Oak Hills subdivision. It was recorded in 1963. There is no water, no roads, and no sewer out on this property. It is effectively what we call a paper subdivision. You can buy and sell lots, but there's essentially no subdivision there. So key features of part of the original Heritage Oaks PDD was a coving plan, curvilinear streets, there were cul-de-sac provisions, extended block lengths. The base zoning was single-family residential R1. There's going to be a maximum number of lots, 215. There'll be parkland dedication, hike and bike trails. And one of the distinguishing features is the enhanced tree planting requirements, which will be a minimum of three trees per lot for a total of 15 inches caliper per lot, which is over triple what our city requirements are. Also, they will be preserving 50% of the heritage trees, those that are 24 inches caliper above on the property. Here is just some of the dimensional and design standards for the original Heritage Oaks PDD. The minimum square footage will be 6,000 square feet, minimum width 50, minimum depth 120, front and rear setbacks will be 20 feet, side will be five, and then it'll be a maximum and previous coverage of 50% for each lot. So here is the concept plan for the original Heritage Oaks PDD. You can see the arrow is pointing to that little white square up in the corner, which is that previously mentioned Lot 13, Block 41. The way that our UDC is written, you cannot just add a lot to a PDD. You have to rezone a minimum of two acres in order to have a PDD. So... The comprehensive plan is, has it as a single-family residential, which provides for a mixture of residential uses, including conventional detached dwellings. So the base zoning of single-family residential R1 is in conformance with the comp plan. So this proposal is not changing any requirement standards or features to the original Heritage Oaks PDD that was approved as 21S15. It's incorporating Block 41, Lot 13 into the subdivision, into the development. And like I said before, our UDC requires a minimum of two acres, which is why they're requesting two acres. The proposed PDD zoning does conform with the comprehensive plan and is consistent with the surrounding land uses. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 23S24 as presented and discussed, and the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation of approval at the September 27th, 2023 meeting with a seven to zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. All right. This item is on the agenda of an open public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in reference to this subject? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is closed. All right. Council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Whitaker.
I'm just curious. It was a long time ago when we approved this first PD. Why did that little block get, why was that not part of the original?
The owner of the development had one holdout, and the gentleman that was waiting to sell that lot, eventually, they found an agreement on a price, so that's why.
Okay. Got it. No, that makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Skagliola.
Okay. Access to the property is going to be off of Shertz Parkway? Are there two entrances and exits off of Shertz Parkway?
So there is just one, but the other entrance will, as you can see, is going to be, Wiederstein basically is going to be changed into that. There'll be emergency access. All that has been sort of hashed out in their master development plan and all that.
Okay. The other thing, the R1 designation, what's the square footage of an R1 lot? Is it really only 6,000 feet? That's a garden home.
Yeah, I believe in the UDC, I don't want to misquote it, but it's more than that. But that's part of their PDD revision, is the 6,000 square feet. But again, this was already previously approved.
Right.
Right? And so they're just incorporating one little square into this development.
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, it's a, it's a really pretty subdivision. I thought perhaps they were going to make it retroactive to the entire subdivision. I'm sitting here scratching my head. Come on. Okay, but they're just crossing the road, essentially. How about the Neighborhood Services? Is that still a viable options? Is there enough acreage available to provide Neighborhood Services like originally planned?
So to my knowledge, there are still a couple Neighborhood Services lots that are going to be kind of adjacent to the Wiederstein Road. And I think they're going to, the proposed development has it as part of their trails and alleys and, you know, things along that nature. But they're not proposing to change any of that.
And was there any discussion as to what would happen with the city properties on the other side of Wiederstein, if we happen to develop that, whether it's going to cause conflicts?
There was no discussion for this PDD about that.
All righty. That's all I have, sir.
Council, any other comments? Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 23S24?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Hayward and second by Councilmember Watson. Council, any other comments? You can go ahead and cast your vote. We can go ahead and publish the vote. We have seven ayes, no objections, motion passes. All right. We'll move on to our next one. Ordinance number 23S78, conduct a public hearing and consideration, consider amendments to Part III of the Code, Shertz Code of Ordinance, Unified Development Code to Article 5, Section 21 dot 5 dot 4, zoning change and zoning map amendments. And this is our first reading. Mr. Haas, floor is yours.
Ordinance 23S78, Amendments to UDC Article 5, Section 2154, Zone Change, Zoning Map Amendment. Samuel Haas, Senior Planner. Okay, to put some context into this, into this ordinance, I'm just going to do a quick overview of what our zone change process is. So an applicant, or sometimes the city, requests for a zone change. The staff reviews the required submittal items, the exhibits and other items. And after staff completes their review, we set a Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing date. Now, prior to that public hearing and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are required by state law to send out written notices within 200 feet of the surrounding property. And we have to do that a minimum of 10 days before the meeting date. And that is in conformance of Local Government Code 211.007. So once we have the planning and zoning public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to city council, for which we have to then notify in the newspaper 15 days before the first city council reading. And that's in conformance with Local Government Code 211.006. So the city council has the first reading and then the second reading. So the written notice that we send out before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting looks like this. It's a one-page document. It has three paragraphs. The first paragraph is the date and time and location of the meeting. The second paragraph is the item to be considered. And the last paragraph is how to return these and a little bit of other information. And so in the bottom here, this is the reply form. And you'll see there's an in-favor, opposed, and neutral two. There's also a name and a signature. And so this is how people cast their vote. So let's read this real quick. This is out of our UDC, Section 2154 E1. If a proposed zoning change or zoning map amendment is protested in accordance with this section, the proposed change must receive, in order to take effect, the affirmative vote of at least three fourths of all members of the city council, according to the Local Government Code. The protest must be written and signed by owners of at least 20% of either, A, the area of the lots or land covered by the proposed zoning change or zoning map amendment, or B, the area of the lots or land immediately adjoining the area covered by the proposed zoning change or zoning map amendment, and extending 200 feet from that area. This is commonly referred as the supermajority rule. So staff puts together, when we receive these oppositions, we put together a, essentially with our GIS department, a map that looks like this. And because this is an area, it's required, the area is what's considered, so the acreage. So we put together this map so it's easily to calculate and it's easily to be sort of communicated as well. And as you can see here, the opposition for this particular one was 25%. So in practice, these written notices, there is no deadline for returning these written notices. So all the way up to the point of the public hearing of city council, we can receive these. Most times when we bring it to city council, we already know that it has crossed that supermajority threshold. But if something were to happen in the future where we're at 19.5%, and we get a whole stack of protest, then staff has to calculate that into our, into the map. We have to verify that they are property owners, and we have to make sure they haven't voted twice. There's a whole lot that goes into counting these, right? And so it makes it very difficult to do that on the day of the actual meeting. So we also determine ownership of these surrounding properties by what the Local Government Code calls the recently approved municipal tax roll. That's straight out of the Local Government Code. We do this through the accounting appraisal of district. And then we also, there's no real clear language about renters. And according to Local Government Code, renters do not count. It has to be property ownership. And so also, what happens if a property has recently been sold? So our UDC, as it stands right now, is really unclear about the process of all of this, or it just doesn't address these issues at all. So what staff is proposing is that we set deadlines for these written notices to be turned in. And so the first reading of city council will be on a Tuesday. We're proposing that... We're proposing that the deadline be the Friday before by noon. And the same with the second reading. We chose this because this allows us to compile everything and calculate everything, and then send out with the information packet that typically goes out with the agenda. And so within this proposal, we are also allowing for a change in between. We're basically saying the most recent vote will be counted. So if you decide to change between the first vote and the second vote, you can do that. But we're only doing one per property. That way, it's very clear. We have in the past received multiple votes for the properties, and it just adds time and effort to us that we have to basically say they already voted. So also, in this proposal, we are going to explicitly state that it's the county appraisal district is how we determine the recently approved municipal tax roll. We're also going to state that tenants and leases protests are not counted. This is just in accordance with the Local Government Code. And if a notified property has recently been sold, and that sale is not reflected on the county appraisal district, if you want your protest to be counted, the burden of proof is on the property owner to bring that in, a deed of sale, a tax certificate, something along those lines. So the Planning and Zoning Commission also requested a couple items. They wanted us to be extra clear about what we are determining from the municipal tax roll. So we did add language in there that says explicitly that property ownership is what we're determining. They also wanted us to include a provision about what happens when that deadline falls on a holiday. So we included that staff will be extended to the next business day. So if it's on a Friday, it's going to be on a Monday that that deadline is going to be. So here is what we are proposing to add to the end of the 2154. We are essentially going to add these subsections, and subsection three indicates, it details the process of determining ownership through the county appraisal district. It's also detailing that tenants and leases are not counted. Everything that I just mentioned is in subsection three. Subsection four will be actually establishing the deadlines. First reading, second reading, and then what happened, you know, if there's some sort of holiday or et cetera. We're also proposing to change the written notice that we send out before the planning and zoning meeting to kind of reflect some of these changes. Essentially, in the reply form, we're adding what is effectively fine print. So what we're saying is we're detailing, we're citing Local Government Code specifically, and we are also explaining to them that there is a deadline on this reply form. And then what happens if the ownership's not reflected on the county appraisal district as well? Also, at the very bottom, we're also putting a staff received date and a staff signature. That way, we could confirm when we got it, whether it's before the first reading or the second. So staff believes that these amendments would help clarify the protest process by explicitly stating how it works. And also, the deadline would help staff calculate the protest vote, and this would help better inform citizens and also council members prior to the first and second reading. Staff recommends approval of the amendments to the Unified Development Code as proposed and discussed, and the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation of approval with their included request at the September 27th, 2023 meeting with a seven to zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. All right. This item is on the agenda as a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in regards to this subject? Going once, going twice. All right. Public hearing is closed. Council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Whitaker.
I just have a question about, when you send the notices, do they just get sent to the address of the property?
Yeah, the county appraisal district has the mailing address listed, and that's where we send it to.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Their mailing address, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Dalla.
Can you go back to the proposed letter? So just a question, if we're having a deadline at noon, one, you know, maybe this is splitting hairs, do we need to specify essential standard time? And do we need to have the time received as well to make sure that that's documented properly?
If that's something that you would like to see included, we can definitely do that.
I would at least have the timestamp on that if we have a noon cutoff, so that way it's pretty clear.
Okay.
Councilmember Brown.
Again, not to split hairs or anything like that, but a lot of properties are on the tax roll as a trust or an LLC. How are you going to verify the signatory's relationship to that?
So.
I would like to see you trust people to be honest, but at the same time, the way people find loopholes.
So I would say that whoever the representative of the trust is that is represented on the county appraisal district, that is who we would get the signature from.
It's just that you don't always see that on the appraisal district.
Sure.
Okay, and same thing with an LLC. You know, you don't know who those people are unless you ask for the, you know, registration and things along that line.
Yeah, let me say this. One thing that staff doesn't do is we don't go validate that what we did is actually from that person. We take it on face value. So if they indicate.
And I agree. I mean, I would love to say I trust that whoever signed this, but the way people are splitting hairs nowadays, you know, somebody can come in and say, well, Joe signed that, and I'm part of that LLC, and I didn't agree to that, you know?
Yeah, we then, again, city attorney may weigh in, but we don't validate the legality of the person signing it.
Well, so this has actually come up, and when it does, the staff has reached out to me, and I've advised them as to who can legally speak on behalf of that partnership corporation, trust, whatever the case may be. And if that is not who has responded, we actually have reached out and said, look, we know you responded, but this is the person who must speak on behalf of this.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much. That's all I needed to know.
Councilmember Skagliola.
Okay, so for the mailing address, you said it's sent to the owner of that particular property?
Correct.
Okay, so not necessarily the street address that's within 200 feet. All right, that's cool. For the supermajority to that kicking off, you had three blocks, the I am in favor of, I am opposed to, and I am neutral to. I'm wondering, how does that I am neutral to get counted?
So for the supermajority, essentially, it's not counted, but I think it's effective to inform council's decision to see who's in favor, who's neutral to, kind of to get a gauge of the constituents on how they feel about it. That's why we have those there. But in terms of the supermajority, it is the opposition that we have to specifically calculate according to local, you know, the state law.
Being the analyst that I am, shouldn't the I am neutral to be taken out of the equation altogether? The amount of property that is involved in this? And the other thing is, you know, maybe you need I am in favor of 80%. Otherwise?
Well, there's no stipulation in the state law that says if people are in favor of it, that brings down the opposition or anything like that. It's very clear about it has to just be opposition that's counted. Again, I think the in favor and the neutral to is really to help better inform council to make a decision.
Sounds good. I told, hey, I told you this was going to be easy, right?
You did.
That's all I have, sir.
Council, any other comments? Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 23S78?
So moved.
With the modification of the timestamp?
So moved with the modification of the timestamp.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hayward with the new language on it, and second by Councilmember Watson with the modification. The time zone.
Time zone, timestamp on the written notification.
Any other comments? You can go ahead and cast your vote. Let's go ahead and publish the vote. We have seven ayes, no objections, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Haas. All right, we have a closed session. The city council will meet in closed session under Section 551 dot 087 of the Texas Governmental Code, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Closed Meeting. The governmental body is not required to conduct an open meeting, one, to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations, or, number two, to deliberate the offer of financial or other incentives to a business prospect. This is in reference to Project E91, Project E92, and Project E88. The time is 7:20. We will reconvene after our closed session. The time is now 7:56. We reconvene into a regular session after our discussion and deliberation regarding our closed session in reference to item number 11, Economic Development Projects. The start time was 7:26, end time was 7:51. There is a resolution, Resolution Number 23R110. A resolution by the city council of the City Assurts, Texas, authorizing an expenditure as reflected in the Economic Development Performance Agreement between the City Assurts Economic Development Corporation and Caterpillar Aquas and other matters in connection therewith. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 23R110?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion made by Councilmember Skagliola and second by Councilmember Brown. Any other discussion? If you can go ahead and cast your vote. Let's go ahead and publish that vote.
I like that procedure.
Oh, there it is. It's seven, seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. All right, council, let's move on. Is there any updates or information requested from staff? Council, is there any items you'd like to place on the future agenda? None, let's go ahead with announcements. All right. Mayor Proton Watson.
Nothing this week.
Councilmember Davis.
Nothing for right now.
Councilmember Whitaker.
Yes, last week I attended Northeast Partnership Luncheon. I would just like to say, I love that luncheon. It's such a great group of people, and probably one of the things I'm going to miss the most is just seeing them monthly, hearing what's going on, and just seeing what a great connection the communities have around here. So I really appreciate it, and it's giving me a great appreciation of the neighboring cities. Also, yesterday was ribbon cutting at La Madeleine's in the Forum. They've been a member of the chamber for many years, but we just had their ribbon cutting. And then today was the chamber luncheon. The candidates were out there, and just want to encourage folks to, if you don't have a chance to talk to them or hear them speak, at least look them up, be an educated voter, and come out on November 7th.
Councilmember Dalla.
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Skagliola.
Yeah, went out to the EMS picnic on Sunday, Pickle Row Park. It was a little bit nostalgic because EMS gathering was the first official function I had as a council member, a long, long time ago. And now it may be my last. Hey, went to the chamber luncheon, meeting the candidates, gave me a warm, warm feeling inside. I'm going to vacate this seat, and you know what? I think whoever sits here will probably give you as much challenges as I ever did. I thought it was interesting that the chamber is up to over 600 members now. Incredible.
Councilmember Hayward.
I attended the ATAC meeting. There was really nothing to discuss, and I am actually going to be coming off of the ATAC as the Northeastern Partnership's representative, and Scott Wayman will go back on to ATAC and represent Northeastern Partnership. On Saturday, the company HRK Safety Consultants did a smoke detector giveaway. They partnered shipped with Asher's, Cibolo, and Selma Fire Department. And then as Selma Fire Department was leaving, I noticed they had the best of I-35. So we might need to do something on the back of our fire trucks to kind of poke back at them. Then I attended the Belverde Spring Branch Chamber of Commerce Diva Night, represented the city well. It was a good fundraiser for scholarships, the chamber luncheon. And for those that did not get to attend the luncheon today, there is an organization called Guadalupe County Concern Coalition that will be having a candidate forum on Thursday night starting at 7:00 PM. That is all.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Whitaker. The Northeast Partnership is a great organization, and you really get a feel for what's going on regionally. None of us small towns could stand alone and do what we do out here, so I'm glad we all get along. Chamber lunch today, again, like everybody said, meet the candidates, good time, see you all Thursday night.
All right, the time is 8:01. We stand adjourned.